Hello, Jim Soleado, Director of the Board of Housekeeping and Meeting. Soleado Municipal Building 301 North State Coast, Soleado, Texas. February 6th, 2020, 6:30 PM. City Secretary, will you call the room, please?
Hold your hand.
Here.
Your question, question?
Here.
And then, David?
Here.
Hold your hand.
Here.
Hold your hand.
Here.
Mary Madison?
Here. Mary Valerie, it's our invitation, please. Praise yourself as we go through this period of time. Remembering the things that are on your heart and the things that you would like to talk to God about. Amen. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Praise, because I know. Praise, give me this one.
Your Honor, I'd like to introduce the third-class parade class from Soleado. They have a lot of sponsors in the background here. And the way we'd like to do this is if y'all would line up right here in the front, you can come too, even if you're not a third layer. And then, we're going to lead the pledge allegiance to the United States flag. So, face the flag. Hands on your hearts. Let's go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, the Texas pledge.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to each Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, I don't want you to go down to your seats yet. Y'all can sit down, please. Sit down. I don't want you all to sit here. Would y'all? Sit where you're being reached for, sit. Just grab a seat.
Can you sit down here?
Now, these microphones are live. I'd like to pull it up, come close to y'all. You can stand up and go to it. And I want you to listen yourself and say, "Do you want?" All right, we'll start with the mayor. What's your name? What's your last name? What's your favorite? What's your favorite thing to do?
Baseball.
Baseball. Okay, we're going to let you go to the mayor approach him. Would you serve?
Chloe Craig. Basketball.
I want you to say something. Do you see these? Do you see these? All these special people. You should certainly have rocks. I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last part.
Football.
Football. So, now, we have baseball, basketball, and football. Pretty good. Your turn now.
My name is Hunter. My name is Case Winger, and I like football.
My name is Abigail Shannon. My favorite sport is soccer.
My name is Kendall Chris, and my favorite game club is dance.
Well, we are so glad. Well, Mr. Mayor? There it is. Glad you're here. We're all glad you're here. Thank you. Mom and Dad, and Princess, and I, well, I want you to go. Okay, citizens' communication, and we have one. Mr. President Reynolds.
That is a hard act to follow. Linda Reynolds, Bible Seven, Santa Rosa. First of all, I'd like to thank all of you for your service to this community. As you all know, in Soleado, residents get together and talk. If you get calls or residents approach you to complain, I hope you listen carefully, consider their point of view, correct their mistaken assumptions, and do your duty for the good of the entire village. Since last I heard, the sanctuary was breaking ground September 15th, 2019. But it is nearly five months past that announcement. I'd like to encourage our village manager to at least put forth, put both the sanctuary and Bear Ossman's 170-lot development off Royal on the agenda every BOA meeting to let Alderman and the public know what, if anything, is happening. Every month, the taxpayer must spend hard-earned dollars supporting a sewer system they will never use. There are many important events to discuss tonight, like the October Brew Fest. But where is the economic development of the sanctuary or the 170 lots on 57 acres off Royal Street? Does the taxpayer and the business community have any hope the sewer system will ever pay for itself? Those of us paying for a sewer we can never use deserve updates. I grew up Royal this morning and got excited to see some new pipes being placed in the area, only to learn the water company is improving and growing, improving and growing while developers do nothing. Please, at least inform the public every few weeks if there is any light at the end of the sewer tunnel. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cliff Coleman. Would you come up, please? We're going to swear you in the office. You still want to do this?
Yes, sir. Where you want it?
That way, everybody can see. The Lord of Soleado, Pope of Office, in the name and by the authority of the State of Texas. Would you write your name, please? I, Cliff Coleman, do solemnly swear.
I, Cliff Coleman, do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Execute the duties of this office.
Execute the duties of this office.
Duty of Soleado Municipal Court Judge.
Duties of the Philadelphs of Soleado Municipal Court Judge.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my abilities.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
For Constitution and laws.
Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Well, thank you very much. Now, then, I need for you to sign this, my friend.
I will do that. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Now, I'm going to sign this, and I signed everything, all my warrants, everything that I do, in Texas A&amp;M Maroon Inc.
That ink tends to fade quicker, doesn't it?
Thank you, yes, sir.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you all.
The consent agenda is before you. This criminal offense of the Director of the Board of Housekeeping and Meeting of January the 10th, 2020. Presenting one, I'll entertain a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
Yes, your second. Question been raised, consecutive discussion. Question has been called, all in favor, raise your hand, please. Close, white flag, casters. Status report, Don.
Yes, for the mayor, let me run through a number of items. I'll probably move quickly, because I know your agenda is somewhat lengthy. First of all, status report on the wastewater project. Connection activity continues as the February 28th deadline nears. We've got several folks coming this week to begin the process of lining up permits. Whether they make that deadline or not, we'll see. Approximately 7% of the properties that it's connected to are in the process of connecting to the wastewater system right now. An interesting note in that is our monthly wastewater customer service revenues are actually nearing to the point where they're going to be covering the monthly operating cost for the wastewater system. In fact, this month, the month of February, we're only about $1,250 short of covering the nut as far as the operating cost for that plant. So, I assume we'll be paying for itself. Building staff, Tech Scott, and Capitol excavation representatives met to discuss ongoing issues with sewer lines being hit and to talk about future tap locations that we've discovered have been covered up by the contractor. Some of those that we found are underneath about 10 or 11 inches of dirt. So, we expressed our concerns with them. We had a kind of Jesus meeting with them, if you will. And we think that everybody's on the same sheet now, and they will stop doing that and take better care of that line. Building staff continues to explore options for installing additional odor controls at the Royal Street lift station, in addition to installing a public restroom at the location. Little bit of an update, Alderman Cogan and I met with Grayton and with Jay Rich, who were conspirating the restaurant project, to talk about the situation. As you know, at the last meeting, we had discussed the idea of potentially putting a CMU building around that lift station and even putting a public restroom adjacent to it. As we've looked at it and talked about it, the feeling is that we can probably, rather than building a structure, go in there and bring in a restroom trailer and dress up the outside of that restroom trailer in such a fashion that it will fit the outside of the other buildings in that vicinity area and could probably fit in more from a character standpoint. It'll meet our restroom needs, and we can easily tie that into the lift station. At the same time, instead of, again, building around the lift station, we're looking seriously at a piece of equipment that's going to run probably in the neighborhood of about $100,000 that will actually encase the portion of the lift station that creates the biggest odor risk. And so, it's a very effective piece of equipment that has been used in this area, and so, we're in the process of looking at delivery along those lines. At the same time, we're talking about making those improvements. We visited with the owners of the restaurant about the idea of showing a commitment on their part, and that is potentially coming in, building some sidewalk on Royal Street in front of the new restaurant area, basically coming from the back of Chupacabra down to that area itself. Again, if we're going to put a restroom there, we need to try to make that accessible and open it up. Those discussions continue. We're going to meet again, I believe, in two weeks with them, and I think we're moving quickly in the direction of some proposals to bring to you for formal action. Mike, do you want to add anything on that?
No, sir. Just please add Alderman Coleman to the invitations in the next meetings, please.
Absolutely, we can do that. Status report on the Main Street project. Work on the Rock Creek Bridge culvert replacement is nearing completion. February 4th is the projected completion date, weather permitting. The contractors telling us they think they're going to be very close to that date. On that date, if not early the following week, Monday or Tuesday, some weather issues to deal with, but they are definitely going to be done in the next few days as opposed to the next few months, despite what some on social media continue to preach. Crews will be laying asphalt on courses of Main Street this coming Saturday, not Sunday. They've changed that date. This is going to be an interesting situation. The area we're talking about is basically that area from Rock Creek back down towards Soleado Creek. And what they're going to be doing is they're going to be going into the west side of the roadway and putting the surface down to allow them to begin to expedite the process of the installation of curb and gutter in that particular section. They've notified the property owners in that particular area, those businesses in that area. It will be inconvenient, and they're going to start early, around 7:00 or 8:00 in the morning, and progress until about 2:00 in the afternoon. They're going to do everything they can to try to keep driveways open and to get people in and out and to keep the traffic moving in that area. But it will be a little tight on Saturday morning, Saturday afternoon, early, as they begin to put the asphalt down. Along those lines, you're going to be seeing a lot of work in that area from Rock Creek down to the south end of the project, where they're going to go in and start putting in curb and gutter. I mention this because this is going to be a significant piece of the project. And when I talk about significant piece, the inconvenience initially is going to be something that people probably aren't going to really expect at this point. When that curb and gutter goes in, it's going to knock out some of that parking until the project's done, it's going to knock out some of the parking in front of those businesses. They've got to pour the curb and gutter before they come in, put the sidewalk in. But you're going to see the final configuration, and people will begin to see how the parking layout will be in front of their place versus next door versus down the road. So, you know, you're going to probably get some phone calls. I know we'll get some phone calls. The contractor and Tech Scott will get some phone calls. But I think when all is said and done, it will come out in the wash from a standpoint of organizing the parking down there. But I just wanted to give you a heads up as far as that goes. And also, just a reminder in that is motors need to slow down and obey traffic control signage and the flaggers and the instructions, and it's rather tight down there right now. Status report on the 2020 general election. Election day is coming up on Saturday, May the 20th. Voters, as you know, are going to be electing a mayor and two aldermen. The deadline to file for a place on the ballot is one week from tomorrow at 5:00, February 14th, Valentine's Day. The Soleado Civic Center will be serving as the polling location for early voting and election day voting. Some word is out on the street that we're moving our polling location to the Church Christ, and that is not the case. It's going to be at the Civic Center, like it always is at the Civic Center. So, please make that note. Early voting will run from April 20th to April the 28th. And as you know, this year, we'll be using some new voting equipment in the election. Status report on a couple of miscellaneous matters. Building staff has provided Tech Scott with a proposed desk design to incorporate, you know, the railing that will be installed on the Thomas Aron Bridge overpass. We're awaiting the approval from Tech Scott on the final design. They're going to give us that before they go into production. The municipal building flagpole project will be an Eagle Scout project. We've met with the Eagle Scout and his parents and also his advisors, and they're going to be moving forward on that project. We'll meet again next week on that. We've told them we'd like to have that done by the end of the school year. It's going to be a challenging project for the young man, as he will be going in and developing a fundraising plan. He's in the process of getting some drawings put together. Understand, when we do Eagle Scout projects, we like to literally put the scout through a form of coordinating process, so they understand. They will actually come here and make a presentation of their plan to the board, and the board will be asked to approve those plans. And then, they will go through the process of pulling the building permit. They won't have to pay for the building permit, but we're going to make them go through the process of pulling the building permit, and then, of course, we'll inspect their work like we did inspect any of the type of work. So, there's a kind of rounding education process that they'll get by doing this project, not just the badge and not just the honor of the Eagle Scout. So, we're excited about that. Auditors are wrapping up work on the fiscal year 2019 audit will be presented to the board at its next meeting. Insurance gestures, I want to let you know, TML has declared that vehicle that was sent on the interstate has a total loss, so we'll be getting about $60,000 check. Lease purchase proposal for a new vehicle will be brought to the board at the next meeting, so we can get that process started. So, that's where we are, Mayor.
Questions, please, to Don.
I have six questions, Don. But they're all along the same lines, I suppose. Okay, the 29th is a court equipped for the, to sign up or?
28.
The 28th, okay. Well, can you walk through the process of how that's going to happen?
The process is? The process, as you have directed it, as this board has directed it, is there are no more extensions. So, that is going to be a decision that you'll have to make if there's going to be any movement on that deadline or any reaction. I will tell you, there are going to be a handful of customers that are going to have a true hardship, and that is the fact that there are duplex units that they're obligated to have by TCQ standards that are on backwater right now. There are about four or five of those folks who are going to be waiting for those. Will they be in by February? They might be. Will the plumbers be available at February to get those in? I don't know. Again, so that's one issue that you all might have to deal with. But the other folks, and we've been telling folks who've come and said, "Well, what if? What if? What if? What if I have a permit?" My comment is the direction I've got from this board is February 28th is the deadline.
Then, that's all good. Okay, so, in the event we go to the 29th, we still don't have people hooked up excluding, you may have some hardship issues. Is, how's the process going to go to start impending the fines? Is it going to be through magistrate? Is it going to be through this board? Is it going to be? Who's going to?
It'll go through municipal court as a violation of the city ordinance, and the individuals will be summoned to court, and the court will deal with it.
So, we start assessing fines on the 29th?
At this stage of the game, the deadline is the 28th. If they're not connected, unless there's an unusual hardship of some sort or fashion. Yes?
Do you have communication with those people? I'm just sorry. Do you have communication with them? I mean, if they truly have a hardship, shouldn't they be presenting at the next meeting and then waiting until after the deadline passed?
We have communication with those duplex people, and those are the only hardships that we really think exist. And that is because they don't have?
Will you bring them to the next meeting? Because we won't have the next meeting, we'll have another one the last one that doesn't pass.
We'll bring those, absolutely. Yeah, but it's just, like I said, it's just a handful of those, and it's, there's one argument to be made. It's something that they take care of early on. There wouldn't be a hardship that exists. But the other hardship, the other argument in this case is the fact that they're waiting in line to get in, and they're ready to connect, but they need the piece of equipment, and they're right above people, and they have large systems that need to be installed. Yes, sir.
Other questions, please?
Yes, Don, have we talked to the businesses about the upcoming parking scramble that the curb and guttering activities are going to cause?
Yes, contractors have been having discussions with business people, and I think there'll be repeated efforts to, there'll be some over communication that will take place on that.
But do we have a designated business representative from Tech Scott that's supposed to be going down through there and talking to those people?
Contractors and the state inspectors have been making those contacts with the business under this one. And again, it sometimes takes two or three visits to get the message across. And rest assured, even when they're communicating with the problem exists, once they see it, as you well, it's put from the business, once they see it, they may understand and go into it, but once they see it, it more than likely is going to generate some comment.
I have a question, I would like to. Right there, I've heard several comments, I drove it today, and it's an actual good comment. Did you read it right by the mansion where they have those two drains in? That's really narrow. And if you have a big truck coming down, the vehicle that's going the opposite way has to stop. And those are permanent structures, so is that going to be a problem from here on out on Main Street?
They're going to be repositioning some of those boxes, some of those boxes in that location. That's one of the areas, in fact, they're going to be doing some pegging on this weekend. But that area, they've got to rework those boxes down there, because that's where Tech Scott had elevation plus in their design.
Other questions, please?
Don, I just got a call. Sorry. Don, you mentioned that we'll be receiving our audit. Shouldn't we have received that this month? Or in January?
No, you're fine with February, based on when you left the contract for the auditor.
Okay. Will we receive a copy of the audit cards our next meeting?
Yes, you will. Interference submission.
And the management letter?
Yep. Yeah, normally, you get it in January, but as we discussed when we left the contract, you were a little late on the contract, but?
I just thought about the law that we have under 20 days from the end of our process will be here. You will pass that, but you're not.
You are, you are, but you're in a situation where it's all under contract, but? You're in shape.
I just think, before we say we're going to state stay.
Yes, sir.
Not, well, we contract, we need a contract earlier.
Yeah, and she's also supposed to call for it to be in January in future years. That's what we're totally aware of that.
Don, you may have said, but I was busy writing, what about the new bridge that's going across by the ring? When are they going to finish that?
The box culvert or the culvert bridge on Rock Creek? If everything goes as planned, it should be done on the 14th, weather permitting. They're telling us the 14th. We think it's, I would more apt to be say that the following Monday or Tuesday, which would be the 17th, 18th, but certainly well within the timeframe that they expected and not what others think.
I will tell you, I was, I think it's a very beautiful bridge, the way it's built. As far as bridges, if there is such a thing as beautiful, it is very, very beautiful. So, you've done a good job.
So, you know, we received an inquiry as to whether that bridge will carry the same volume of water, the same capacity of water through that the box culvers did, and it will. It's just a different design. You know, there's not a box in there. It's an oval circle, so, but it does be.
Well, hopefully, by summer, there will be no more of them, and all the construction will be there.
That would be the hope, and I will tell you, the movement they're doing this weekend is inconvenient, as that's what will be, will help expedite that process.
Good news. Okay, anything else, Don, you want to talk?
Yes, sir.
All right. Soleado Police Status Report. How you doing?
Good.
Good.
What do you say?
You're going to get a brand new call?
Just got one. To answer your call. The question from last time, we got our top order. They expedited after our crash and contacted the D-Order chaplain, which is a bunch of other agents, so we got it cleared out for you. Okay, calls for service in January. We're up. 18 calls from last month, or from the previous month, and 16 offensive boards, six supplements, four crashes, two warrants were issued, citations. We're low down, and warnings were way up, so training and guys, some of these are directly into the training of the officer. Had three arrests last month. Priority one response times, about 4:20. Two minutes for priority twos, and priority threes will be 2:55. I see the calls for service there are a lot, it keeps going up. Last month, we had a lot of continued house watches as well, so those are going with them this month. Sheriff's citations were running about the same ballpark as we have in the past. And crashes are just depending on whether, so, we didn't have any last night, so development temporarily not there so well. Response times are staying pretty much where I like to see it. Always better if it's lower, but we've handled pretty well there, pardon once. And I'm keeping the 12-month span here for us, so we can just see that the trend wasn't , I think, one separated since the new year, so. Priority two, again, where I like to see it, and priority threes as well. House watches, yeah, we did 51 more than we did the previous month, so checking on people's houses. And words getting out, that was the big thing, is a lot of citizens didn't realize, and our post showed the last couple, it was actually down all kind of need to be developed with security. We saw the bar dealers, kind of those house watches, so. So, security teams were on the 19th and 18th, both at the library, both of all tenants. All kind of sheriff's department center representative out on January 18th answering questions, who could be that people from outside or jurisdiction that were concerned were asking for the same assistance that we're providing to the citizens, so all kind of came out and sure that they would do the best. Since the security meetings, again, there have been memberships that are starting to increase, we've had a bunch of people, cops program having been involved, so the more the mayor, the more we have, the more patrols can be, or the doctors. Questions?
Questions, please, to the chair.
Sure.
Hi, kudos. I, after all of the people stuff that's been going on, I want to say that I really appreciate all the extra effort you've given into the community meetings and talking to people and getting out there. And I've heard several people saying that, you know, police officers knock on the doors and hey, your door was locked, like the car was literally standing open in the middle of the night. And I'll tell you that I have lots of security cameras around my house, and the only one person or people that I've seen on my camera since you guys really started having patrol is your cars. So, at like 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning. And I just really appreciate all that extra work that's paid off.
Any other comments or questions, to the chair? Well, Mr. Fire Chief, how you doing, Chester?
All right.
You been busy?
Yes, I've been busy. Going there, had a report for a month of January. We had 17 EMS calls in the village. We had 12. We had, uh, seventeen EMS calls in the village, we had twenty-four in the county. We had four fire calls in the village, we had eighteen fire calls in the county. We had four motor vehicle accidents in the village. We had six motor vehicle accidents in the county. And, uh, that's my report for the month of January.
Questions, Shane, please?
I got one, sir. Uh, on your, off of the last table there, it says advertising. How do you advertise?
Um, I would have to, those probably are our shirts that we wear. Uh, I don't know. I didn't know that I was gonna be going over this tonight, so. I've turned it in every six months, this is the first time I've ever... So, I don't, I don't know what to... I can look at it. I'll look at it. Oh, I'll have to look, but I think it may be our, like our T-shirts that we wear that say Slade of Fire Rescue. That may be under that, but I'll have to go back and see what I...
Other questions, please?
Chief, they have, uh, this is a really good time to plug the fire shirt fundraiser that y'all are doing. Hope everybody in the group has their fire shirts on board.
Yeah.
And, uh, I encourage you to, uh, really take a look to support our fire department with that foundation.
Yeah, we're gonna, I was hoping we'd have some, I was gonna bring some, but I'll wait till, uh, next week, but, uh, we got some orders. We had a pretty good order and then I went in and ordered extra. The bottom next meeting, I'll have them, I mean, we can advertise a little bit. I know they've advertised some on Facebook, we hadn't got it in the paper or anything, so. I think we may try to set up that road charge or something one day, so, so, but we're doing that, um...
And then we also...
Uh, I think around a hundred. I don't know, I'm sure y'all seen the truck, I guess in paper, I haven't been here in, I guess, been a month or two since I've been out here, but. Southwest Bell, one of our neighbor departments, uh, donated a truck to us. They come and picked it up yesterday, it's in Austin, a non-star emergency group. They're gonna go through it, force, redo some gauges and there's three valves that are leaking on it. They're gonna redo the valves on it and, uh, get it all squared away for us, so. It's down in Austin, getting repairs, we'll hope to get it back in a couple of weeks and we'll be, uh, we'll be getting rid of one of the older trucks, the, uh, it's, uh, it's a, got a gas motor and then it's standard and, uh, so it eats a lot of gas and some of the guys don't know how to drive standards. The, the new truck is automatic, it's, uh, it'll be a really nice for us, so. We're excited about that and happy that, the, our neighbor department, Southwest Bell, donated it to us.
Shane, did you just say, go with it, give it to us, please?
Uh, it's Southwest Bell, they're overall for one ninety-five. They gave us first option, we run calls with them on mutual aid, we border, our whole west, west end of our district, we border, so. Uh, we run a lot of calls, so they offered it to us first. And of course, we had a meeting and accepted the offer before they offered it to anybody else in the counties. It's pretty awesome.
You're always Johnny on the spot. I was sort of adding up your calls, the numbers of them. Would you say that you, uh, your calls were as tired or accident or going to someone's house, get a medical condition? Would you say that your, your groups are busy almost every night of the year?
Pretty much, yeah.
That is amazing for a public...
We got, I guess last year, we finished off the year with, uh, I think it was right around nine hundred and eighty, so we almost made it a thousand more. For the calls, so. Uh, I figured we'd make it, we'd make it, uh, last year, I, I thought for sure that where we were going, we were making anywhere from seventy to a hundred calls a month. And we were on track to make a thousand calls and then, for some reason, uh, which I wasn't hearing December, but our December just defined, like, it was real, kinda gave us a break. We, uh, yeah, so that, uh, that held us from making our thousand.
Good job. Thank you for the questions or comments you wanna add, Chris.
Thank you.
Chad, I see you anxiously waiting in your bathroom. How are you proceeding and how is Truus?
Doing well, uh, both of them, I'd say, me being included. Just some things I've got going on, uh, just as a review. Monthly newsletters are still going out, uh, our, um, which is still going for the new thing, but it's going pretty well. Twenty twenty visitor guides are being printed now and we've got the boxes and labels ready to send them out, uh, all the way to state. Uh, I say twenty twenty, there's no real payoff, so they're just the new guides with all our new imagery that we did last this week. Google search ads are starting, um, in next week and that's gonna be, um, a long campaign going into July. And then we've got social media advertisements, uh, one I'm running right now, Mother of Angels in Slade, and then, uh, for the rest of the year, it'll be evidence and arts, uh, sort of alternating throughout the year. And then I wanted to bring up some, some old, uh, sort of graphs that you'd seen before that are updated. You see the dot on the left is January visitation. This is at the visitor center, uh, you see the uptick, uh, from last year, and go to the next slide down. There's supposed to be one between, oh, never mind, never mind, that's the next one, yeah. Uh, and then, um, this is our website traffic, um, and you'll notice the difference, you can click the next slide here. Uh, the big difference between last year, um, kind of echoes some of what I heard on Main Street with Stroll. They're really successful campaigns where a lot of new people coming to town and they were exploring their websites where they came. So, you're seeing fifty-six percent up in November and then two hundred and ninety-five percent, uh, in December. Uh, and in January, we're just, it's just eight percent, it's too many people, but still an increase. I still, I'm pretty happy with that in January, everybody's still trying to look out for the holidays, I know there's certain things to do, but... So, I thought that was, uh, pretty interesting and it, it echoed, we saw it on Main Street, I think. And then, um, again, the, the font doesn't carry through, so it doesn't have the same effect, but anyways, um, Inspired by Slade is, I might have mentioned it last month, but I wanted to give you a, a legitimate kind of overview of what it is. Introducing Inspired by Slade, a new project in partnership with Slade Agricultural District, highlighting the many exciting political artists and community members which has the next slide at home. This series to help, is to help you get up close and personal with the individuals who are inspired by Slade. We continue to inspire us, they're sure to inspire you too. So, basically what this is, is a, a storytelling campaign, uh, monthly, we're gonna interview, so we're starting with the artists and I think I'd like to see it expand with the artists to general business owners and things like that. Uh, we talk about them, their story, how they end up in Slade, uh, and then we, uh, go into what they like about Slade, what inspires them about Slade and, and with the artist, obviously, it's in the art studio art. And we've got some really good responses so far. We've got one that we're releasing, it's on the website, but we're releasing it next week officially. And then, uh, I'm writing the second one now, and we just keep going, uh, month by month. And then some upcoming events, uh, February, fourth, Valentine's Day, we've got, uh, Blow Your Own Glassberg, there's date night events, dinners, room specials, the DVD hotels, um, all sorts of things going on, from dinner and dance, which is dinners, and then for Friday, of course. And then March is when our spring events start to ramp up. Johnny's Non-Star Music Series is an annual series, uh, starts in March, runs through October. Um, and then, of course, the last weekend, March, is the date from Bob Flower and then what you're about to talk about, April. So, I don't wanna, I don't wanna... Yeah, that's all I have for you.
Questions, please, to Chad?
I got one question, Chad.
Yeah.
With your organization in the Chamber of Commerce, you guys kind of blend, I think, in places. So, are you guys probably to be looking at their weaknesses, how are your weaknesses, and kind of collectively joined together to make a push forward to maximize exposure to Slade?
Our marketing standpoint? On the marketing standpoint?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, our marketing isn't really what overlaps that much, I would say, I would say, our, uh, other than just sharing each other's things and sharing the same events and that sort of thing. They really focus on the Belgian temple, um, uh, Slade, a very closed market, and we really are focusing on, on more external markets. Really, yeah, and we're sharing similar messages, um, obviously, um, ours is gonna be along our, our branding most of the time, that, uh, what I talked about last month, uh, but with marketing, we really don't overlap in terms of audience. The hope is that they both work together in tandem, they kind of capture all the local audience and, and, uh, and we capture folks so farther away. In reality, I mean, people that are closer are also gonna respond to our stuff if they, if they happen to, uh, we can't, we can't control that, but, uh, yeah. So, I mean, I think, yeah, they were, they were both good.
Um, I, I have one more thing to add, and I was just trying to tell you that I really appreciate all you guys have done in light of, you know, all the construction, everything that's going on, I think you've done a really good job, especially during Stroll, but just in general, um, promoting the events, businesses, everything to make sure that everybody knows that we're still working. Praise to those to Don and the staff there too, because I think between the two of you guys, you've really kept the tour from going here despite all the issues that are going on on Main Street. And so, um, I know there's been a lot of negative press and there's some stuff they have in the paper, it's one or two people who are griping, but of course, the one or two are the ones that make it a huge deal. Um, and that you guys have quietly, you know, kind of kept it together and done a great job. So, I wanna tell both of you publicly, I think you've done a really great job.
I'll say it, though. You're really, yes?
Motion to approve.
Uh, any other questions? I do have one for you. Are there any other questions? Can you please tell me, the twenty-seventh through the twenty-ninth, the Lawthow Arts and Crafts Festival, is that gonna be on one place or is it gonna be scattered down Main Street?
It's gonna be at St. St. Uh, so that'll be at St. St. And then, um, the, the binary, Slade binary will be at St. St. So, it's gonna be the same time.
Any other questions you'd like to ask Chad?
Mayor, let me jump in real quickly and, and let you all know that, that we have added another hat to Chadling. And that is, as you know, sometime back, the city agreed to take on the, the face of the cultural arts district. And we have the ability and, and, and to just utilize high funds to promote that district and, and to help that district function and as such, uh, one of the things Chadley's gonna be doing in addition to the tourism pieces is gonna be helping, uh, from a staff standpoint on the cultural arts district. So, I thought you might find that worthwhile to know. There will be a grant, if all goes as planned, there'll be a grant coming for that district for an event coming up in April, uh, on your next meeting. As soon as we find out how that application is structured.
Let me see, in April?
It's gonna be a laser show as was proposed, so. Also, just a quick clarification, uh, jumping back to Robbie's inquiry. Our, the deadline for us to submit an audit is actually a hundred and eighty days, uh, so we're well within our timeframe on that situation happening and will continue to be next year, as though it will be coming in January instead of, instead of August.
Ready to go?
Yes, sir.
Any other comments or questions that you'd like to make, Chad? Good work, Chad, thank you very much.
Thank you.
What we're gonna do now, uh, we have some guests here tonight from out of town and, uh, I want to go to number E, Don. Number E, and they're gonna take this because they're stopping. E, it's on, uh, it's on the back page and the second page. And then from there, we'll go right into the drawing room also. Discuss and consider possible action. Approving plans for the Lawthow Brewery Company Oktoberfest Bicycle Ride on October seventeenth, twenty twenty.
Yes, sir, uh, this is kind of an exciting item, it's on your agenda, tonight you're being asked to approve plans for the Oktoberfest Bicycle Ride that should take place on Saturday, October seventeenth. Uh, the headquarters for that ride will be at Barrow Brewing. It's a benefit for the volunteer fire department. Uh, it is a non-competitive bike ride with three optional routes, uh, that involve some city streets and then accounting streets. Uh, there will be rest stops available on two of the longer rides, and the riders will park Barrows and Royal. By eight o'clock in the morning, all riders should be wrapped up by about eleven. If I was in that, it'd probably be about five in the afternoon. Then organizers have secured the necessary insurance for the event. Uh, the event, uh, in the event of inclement weather, the benefit bike ride will be moved to the next weekend, which would be the twenty-fourth. Uh, Katie's here, if you'd like to talk, we included the routes in your packet, uh, to, to look at. It is truly a challenging event, the great thing about it is, and we stress it's non-competitive. So, if you like to ride a bike, it's a great way to get some exercise and enjoy it. So, Katie?
Hi, I'm Katie Hill, Barrow Brewing Company, and Barrow is really just acting as the host of this event and a fundraiser. As y'all may know, we have bicycle riders, um, that start at the brewery up to three or four times a week. Uh, it's really incredible, the cycling community that's here in central Texas. I have Berta, uh, the ride director, and Bo, uh, really the ride consultant, um, and subject matter expert, uh, here tonight, as well as Mike and Mike, um, Mike and Mike, um, two of the avid riders in central Texas who really know a lot about this community, the sport, and, um, can answer any questions y'all have about the safety. Uh, we're coming to you tonight because of the inclusion of the roads here in town and the necessary support of law enforcement. Don said he'll, uh, coordinate with the chief and, um, Bell County, uh, I don't think we go into Williamson County. But, um, there are three routes and, um, there are designated, uh, water stops on the longer routes. And I'm just excited because the people that enter this, they register online and they're all gonna get T-shirts, race shirts that look like Lederhosen. So, I'm, I'm really excited about that, but, um, if you have any questions, I have the experts here to answer them.
Questions, please? Is there a fee to enter?
Yes. And that, that, that fee will cover the cost to pull this off as well as proceeds go into the Slade Volunteer Fire Department. And it'll be, um, the fee will be online, so, um, once we have permissions, we'll publish everything online.
Do you have any downhill routes?
Sorry, this is Slade.
Speed is not required.
It starts up low.
Oh, it is an uphill start?
Holy Pepperdale. Pepperdale.
Wow.
We can do come back down again.
Remember to stop it when you come back down.
Well, if you don't have any, uh, downhills, do you have any electric bikes?
We can each use one of those.
Thank you, how proud of you.
About sixteen miles, they even have an electric bike. Kudos to you guys, that sounds amazing.
Is there gonna be any questions, like, for example, the sixty-three mile ride? Are there gonna be EMS vehicles positioned or is it just gonna be like on call if something happens or how's it gonna work?
So, we'll have, um, we'll have, uh, EMS at the rest stops is what we're thinking. Have them along and then we'll obviously coordinate with them to see if we can have people kind of drive the route as well as the ride is happening. But we will provide emergency, uh, nine-one-one or have a contact.
Any more comments or questions?
That's amazing.
If there is none, then I'll entertain a motion, please?
Motion to approve is ready.
Sir, yes.
Motion to make, second. Are there any discussion or comments? Question has been called, uh, favor race or deny, please, opposed likewise. Thank you, bring it up, huh?
One here, um, Nolanville, Parker Heights, Parker Heights. A lot of it.
Fifty-nine, I, yes, I do. I'll tell you why, um, hmm, if you'll leave your address, we'll make sure the editor calls you. And you can live in Slade. See, all right?
Thank you.
Thank you for the evidence. Okay, we're gonna go back now to the first page, you know, right on the back, on the floor, public hearings and possible actions. We've said a little bit about public hearings. If you've never been involved with one, you've never... If you've never been involved with one, or you've never had, uh, been here on a recumbent, I come out of this session and go into a public hearing. And I go into the public hearing, I'll also tell what time I went into that tour. And then I will do three things. I will, number one, ask anyone who wants to speak, please come forward. You will walk to the lectern over there, you'll say your name, your address, and remember, you have three minutes and we watch every person. And then when that person is through and sits down, then the next person comes up. After an appropriate amount of time, I'll call for a second call. This is round one, we had to get the courage up a little bit, and now they're ready to talk, just come up and do the same thing. And then on the third time around, and it will be the last time, it'll be time, if anything you want to say about this, that's what you're going to say. And then I get with this, and I do this. What's going to happen at that time, I will close the hearing and will come back into this session of your city secretary, the time that it closes. That's pretty much the way it is, but the big thing to remember, three minutes. And I will ask you, please, if you're going to clap or anything, please not do this because we really are on top scale tonight and, uh, we know you're enthusiastic. So I'm going to read it. Number eight, hold a public hearing and consider approval of the first reading of ordinance of the village of Soleado, Texas. Regulating the dedication of park land for new residential subdivisions. Fees in lieu of dedication, parkland standards and construction standards for parkland improvements. Providing for survivability, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for findings of fact, an effective date and proper notice and meeting. Don?
Uh, yes, sir, mayor members of the board, this is a, uh, an ordinance that is, uh, been in the process for several months. Uh, as you know, uh, we have talked at this DIA's, uh, Plankton Zoning Commission has talked, the large size task force has talked about the shortcomings that exist in our current ordinance regarding the dedication of parkland and new developments in the community. Um, it is a, uh, rather antiquated ordinance, uh, that, that probably does not have a lot of basis for what it requires. Uh, and in this arena, it's important to get a basis, uh, when you start requiring folks to dedicate land and you start requiring fees relating to such. Uh, the current ordinance we have, uh, sets up, uh, a process where they're obligated to dedicate land. If they don't want to dedicate it, they can, they can pay for that land. It does not, uh, allow for the collection and make fees for the development of that park. So you can get the land, but the more expensive piece is, is to develop the park. And it's not right to get the land and then place the burden back on the rest of the taxpayers to develop the park. The concept behind what you're going to be hearing about tonight is to develop an ordinance and put an ordinance in place that actually will generate the, the land and the fees to the point where growth will pay for itself as opposed to requiring the existing residents to pay for the new growth that comes into the community. As I mentioned, the existing ordinance itself is somewhat antiquated, it's been on the books for years. Uh, the current regulations require a developer to dedicate one acre of parkland for every one hundred units of their proposed development. However, there are very limited standards in the type of parkland that, that would be accepted. Uh, what we're going to propose is a more comprehensive approach towards dedication of parkland. It also has a very unrealistic requirement that five acres minimum for any foot park, uh, that, that you're going to, you know, you're going to develop in a subdivision. Uh, so, you know, when we're talking about subdivisions, subdivisions comes in all, all types of shapes and sizes. And so we tried to develop an ordinance that you're going to see here that tries to maybe fit all, if at all possible, or come close to trying to fit all as best as possible. The current regulations allow a developer to pay a fee in lieu of dedication in the amount of two hundred dollars per unit in the subdivision. Uh, current regulations do not require the developer to participate in funding the future public park improvements. And the current regulations do not apply to any development in the ETJ. It only applies to developments in the city, uh, those, those developments located within corporate limits of the village. So the Plankton Zoning Commission, over a period of months, went through a discussion process, worked with staff, and, uh, they have come forward with the recommendation tonight for a, a proposed parkland dedication fee ordinance to take place of the existing ordinance that's, that's currently on the books. I'm going to go through this ordinance kind of with a helicopter view. Uh, it's pretty simple to understand, it's rather voluminous, but it's pretty simple to understand when you boil everything down. Uh, it, it calls for a public parkland dedication requirement. Uh, and the, in this particular ordinance, the developer of a residential property in the village with five or more lots or dwelling units must dedicate one acre of public parkland for each ninety-five dwelling units in the development. A minimum of two acres shall be dedicated in any residential development that has five or more lots. So the thought process here is you're going to get at least two acres of parkland dedicated in any subdivision that's five acres or greater. Five lots for five lots or greater, or five dwelling units or greater. Uh, that, I think an important note is this land can be made up in an aggregate fashion. It doesn't have to be two acres right here. You could take several pocket parks in the neighborhood, you could take trail systems, but the combined acreage of that open space, that dedicated parkland, at least two acres in any development that has five dwelling units or lots or more. Uh, the development of the residential property in the village's ETJ with five lots or more or dwelling units are not required to dedicate public parkland. You're going to say, wait a minute, you know, what's going on there? Well, the reason why is because we can't go out and develop a park in the ETJ. It's outside of our jurisdiction. We can require them to develop a park, or we can require them to pay in to pay for public park improvements that might be made in the city. But it doesn't make sense for us to go in and, and, and potentially require dedication of public parkland in an area that we don't have the ability to go in and, and, and develop a public park. That's outside of city limits of property. Uh, this particular ordinance also says that dedicated parkland must meet certain standards. And as you can see in the ordinance, it's, uh, they're rather comprehensive, dealing with everything from slope, uh, to terrain, to floodplain, to, uh, width, to, to all types of environmental issues, uh, drainage concerns. Uh, and it has to get approved before it's dedicated. They can't just say, this is yours. We have to look at it, we have to analyze it, we have to make sure that we're comfortable, since that's going to be public parkland, and we have to make sure that we're comfortable with what's being dedicated. So again, five dwelling units or lots or more in a subdivision, one acre per ninety-five dwelling units. That is based on an analysis of the current level of service of parks in the city. Uh, an analysis that involves also, uh, a calculation of the number of residents per acre. Uh, you know, we, we've got formulas that we can stand by in the development of these in the event we do get challenged. We don't have those formulas on what's in place right now in our ordinances. It'd be very difficult to defend and justify as reasonable. So in addition to the parkland dedication requirement, we too in this proposed ordinance have a fee in lieu of public parkland dedication. And, uh, the way this works is this, the developer of a residential property in the village with five or more lots or dwelling units may pay, not required to, but may pay a fee in lieu of parkland dedication in the amount of eight hundred and forty-two dollars per lot or dwelling unit. Again, there's a calculation behind that. And in this particular situation, it's a calculation that's based on what is considered to be an acre, a price per acre, an average price per acre in the city. Uh, we started off very low on this number until we started talking to Bellcat and talking to the real estate community and found out that the typical average acre in this town is running about eighty thousand dollars, uh, which is extremely expensive, but, uh, that, that comes into play, that comes into the calculation of this particular, uh, number. So eight hundred and forty-two dollars per lot or dwelling unit in a subdivision with five or more lots or dwelling units. How about the ETJ developments? Well, it's a little bit different. We're not going to require any dedication of land, but we are going to require them, since we can't really get into requiring land out there. We are going to say that we are going to require them to at least pay a fee in lieu of parkland dedication, since they're not having to give that up. And of course, that too will be eight hundred and forty, eight hundred and forty-two dollars per lot or dwelling unit. The fees that are generated from this fee in lieu of, if this is the direction the developer takes, where it's an ETJ subdivision, those fees will be accounted for separately. They'll be put into a separate fund and they can only be spent, uh, for the acquisition or leasing of parkland. And they have to be spent within a certain period of time, seven years is what we have set up in this particular ordinance. If they're not spent within seven years to go towards the, the acquisition of land, then it goes back to the development, uh, from that standpoint. So you, you've got a clock that starts ticking once you get it, so the money does what it's supposed to do, it works for what it's supposed to work for. Uh, the, these particular fees are, are not uncommon. Uh, one of the comments that we had, uh, about the existing regulations is the fact that they were so, uh, low, the amount of fee per acre was so low that it was encouraging people more to pay off as opposed to give the land. In this situation, the feeling is that we've gotten, we have justified the number, we feel, uh, yes, it's much more expensive than what we currently have on the books. But quite frankly, the goal of this thing is to try and promote the development of parkland and not promote the payment of fees for parkland. So, uh, that's what we're looking at as far as the fee in lieu of, of the parkland dedication. Then there's a third component to this ordinance that we talked about. The current ordinance we have right now does not establish any type of recovery process for fees, uh, to go towards the development of whatever parkland, be it leased or purchased by the city or being dedicated by a developer. Uh, in this situation, uh, we are saying that, uh, there would be a park development fee that would be collected. And this could be collected on any development regardless of the number of lots. You know, so, uh, if it's under, if it's under five, you know, uh, they're still, they're going to start paying, and this would be what they'll pay. They won't have to pay the other thing as far as the fee in lieu of. But, uh, in this particular situation, the park development fee, uh, the way this works is we, we calculated that out based on looking at, uh, the current park development costs. And, and they work out to a fee of about thirty-three hundred and eighty-eight dollars per lot or dwelling unit in a subdivision, regardless of the number of lots or dwelling units. And, and also, I think it's important to note, it's regardless of where that subdivision is located. So in the ETJ or in the village, every development is going to pay that park development fee. And those funds get, again, pushed into a separate accounted-for fund that will go into paying for park improvements. So the comment is, that seems like a lot of money. You know, it is a lot of money. A park development is not cheap, and I think that's important to understand. Recognizing the fact that this could be a lot of money, that the feeling was, do we need to provide at least an opportunity for relief from that fee for the developer? So how do you provide that opportunity? Well, if the developer comes in and says, you know, here's the deal, you know, I, I will develop the public park, you know, at my cost, you know, in, in lieu of this. Well, we have a provision to know that allows them to do that. If it's a developer that wants to come in and says, I will develop the park, but it's going to be a private park, we have a, a mechanism in this ordinance to allow them to come in and to recover seventy-five percent of their fee if it's going to be a private park on that end. So, you know, we felt like, we feel like we've given somewhat of a, uh, an avenue of relief for the developer in this situation from what is probably the most sizable of the fees, and that's the park development fee. Uh, you know, and, and I think it, it, it works, it's, 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 it's a mechanism that's used by many communities. Uh, it's a growing trend as far as trying to recover that cost. The whole concept here is to get growth to pay for itself. It's not intended to choke off growth, uh, it's, it's intended to get growth to pay for itself and to provide recreational amenities for this community, uh, which in our minds are, are major tools when it comes to economic development. So let's look at an example of how this ordinance itself might work. Somebody comes in with a hundred and seventy unit residential development in the village. Uh, under this ordinance, uh, they would be required, if you, if you run the calculation on the one for ninety-five, it comes out at one point seven nine acres. But keep in mind, we said they have to dedicate at least two acres. So in this situation, it's a two acre, uh, parkland dedication. Uh, if they don't want to make that dedication, then they'll pay the fee in lieu of. And that fee in lieu of, I believe, was eight forty-two per lot that works out to a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars that they would pitch in in lieu of dedicating land. The city would take that money, the city would use that money to develop the park in the region of that development. We provided, there's a map in the back of that ordinance, we, we developed, uh, quadrants in the city, and what we would do is we would allocate those funds from that particular subdivision in that quadrant. So you try to develop the park somewhere in the quadrant in close proximity to that subdivision. Uh, the required park development fee, this is where the numbers get stuck, is five seventy-five, nine sixty. Uh, and you say, good lord. Well, if they want to come in and say, I'm going to go ahead and build the park, then you strike the five seventy-five, nine sixty. And understand, there's a documentation process that would go into that. We would have to approve what park they develop, the amenities of that park would have to meet our standards that are set forth in our ordinance and our park development manual. And, and they would have to look by that, but they could get out of that particular fee in that situation. From a private park standpoint, they'd get a four hundred and thirty-one thousand dollar refund of the park fee in that situation, if they get seventy-five percent of, of the total park fee. So we think it's, it's, it's an ordinance that brings us kind of into the modern times when it comes to parkland dedication and, and fees. Uh, we think it's an ordinance that provides some relief to the developer, uh, if they want to work with the ordinance and work with the city and the development of the various recreational amenities. We don't, uh, we, we give them some base standards for the development of any park they want to build, uh, they can add to those standards. Uh, but they also, they're going to have to meet our standards from a safety standpoint of equipment, from a standpoint of amenities. Any park that's built will have certain base amenities in it, uh, but they also will have a long list of other things they can add and pick and choose from the development of the park. Uh, this is a process that is going to trigger a pre-submission meeting with the village, uh, for each subdivision that comes in. It's something we, we've kind of started on our own, kind of voluntarily, uh, not related to this specifically, but just related to the general subdivision, uh, submission process, where we sit down with the subdivision before they submit and try to get their questions answered. In this situation, we would roll this as another component into that meeting and talk to them about their dedication. Uh, these fees will be paid at the time of building permit, uh, or at the time of platting, depending on the development itself and what goes. Uh, so, you know, that, that's the way it is. We, we have a public hearing, uh, at P and Z and Katie's here. I don't know if she'd like to add anything from, from a standpoint of Plankton Zoning Commission's thought process, but, uh, there was a lot of discussion on it that I passed unanimously. And tonight's your first reading of the sources.
Okay. Before we go into the hearing, are there any questions you want to ask, or don't just to make sure you're ready to hear all the other people? Are there any questions or comments?
Let me question for you now, what about existing plots that we've already approved?
Can't apply, can't go retroactive.
You're saying doesn't apply?
No.
So anything we've done in the past is saved for this order?
Yeah. It's, if those, those are vested, if they've been filed, they're vested and they're protected. You don't have the ability to go back and say, hey, King Zellis. No.
Okay, so one more question, it's a lot size sensitive, in other words, if somebody comes in and wants to build ten units at two acres, they should have built a park.
This would apply to apartment complexes as they come in. If someone comes in with a two hundred unit apartment complex, you're going to consider it apartment or dwelling.
Now, have we, uh, have we had any developers giving you feedback on this?
No, there, we had, we had some that sat in one of the first discussions the board had on it. Uh, they didn't stand up and offer any comment on it, and they certainly didn't show it in the public hearing process.
Okay. And, um, I say how interesting then, is if we get the park fees put into our park account, can we use it for maintenance and improvements for base park?
No, sir. Uh, you could potentially use it for improvements for base park, but you cannot use these fees for maintenance. The whole concept of the parkland dedication fees, uh, the fees in lieu of, of these, these fees for development, the whole concept is to maintain a, the level of service for parks that you have today. The idea being, when a development comes in, it could potentially drag your level of service down because there's more taxing on the property as far as the, the park management goes, more people using it, wearing it down. The idea is to generate the fees to, number one, to buy facilities that are adequate to maintain the level of service with that new development. Cannot use it for maintenance. No, sir.
And, anything that we did would drag our level of parks up, because in our parks, we're pretty, pretty sad right now for maintenance and, and the type of facilities that we have available. There's no way we can write that in there, that we can use this for maintenance, we can't use it for improvements or base park, we can't.
General tax, general tax dollars to maintenance. You're going to be generating tax revenue from these businesses, so the concept would be they're, they're going to be contributing to making maintenance of the facilities, so.
Okay.
I guess like, my, my question is, define maintenance versus improvements?
Improvements is going in, putting in a planning, a place gate, maintenance is mowing on a regular basis or going in painting or, uh, you know, doing the toilets on a regular basis.
But for instance, if we had to like add wood chips to like the current base park, you're putting more down, is that?
That would be, if it's an existing amenity, that would be a maintenance item in that standpoint. If it's a new amenity, you know, if we were going in, for example, and swapping out and converting, you know, from wood chips to the new rubberized surface and those type of things, you could probably argue that that's an enhancement, that's an improvement, but that would be a one-time deal. When it comes time to replace those in years to come, that would convert to a maintenance.
So you're saying that we're wanting to, uh, collect fees from, uh, all these guys out in the ETJ? And, uh, they're not going, they're just going to put it into our, our bank account, and then we can't use it to improve the parks that they're actually going to be coming to visit here in Soleado?
No, that's, that's not what we're saying. We're saying you can do that, you just can't go out and build public parks in the ETJ. But you can use this to enhance, but the thought process in this situation, Mike, would be if it's in the quadrant, you'd certainly try to find a park to develop within the quadrant that's in. quadrant that's in the city limits. To try to serve that development in addition to the others in that particular area. Or a base park is the guy, you know, base park is the...
And, uh, my last question I have is, uh, so if we do put a two acre park out in a, in a development, uh, what's that gonna look like? Is it gonna just have walking paths? Is it gonna have playgrounds? Is it gonna have a splash pool?
The beautiful, it's, it's a good, that's a good question. The beautiful thing about this particular ordinance, and it's something that, that P and Z talked about during their discussions on it, and that was, they, the way this is worded gives the developer the opportunity to think outside the box as opposed to just putting a postage stamp park at the corner of, in subdivision. It gives them the ability to look at doing trail systems, to look at doing splash pads, or, or look at doing pavilions, or picnic areas, or exercise, you know, exercise bars, whatever. So, you know, what we did is, we gave them a long laundry list of, of items that, that we think, you know, are good, and, and that we want in our public parks, that are popular items, that are safe items. There's a set of national standards that this parking, this playground equipment's supposed to meet, and that they can pick and choose from that. There's some bare minimums, there are four or five elements, you know, and whatever they develop, but, uh, the idea was to give them the flexibility to kind of play with it. Hence the reason we also decided, instead of requiring all the land to be contiguous and in one, one postage stamp location, we gave them the ability to, to aggregate the property to, to meet that requirement.
I have one, one more question, sorry. Uh, okay, say that this example, this guy, uh, group, whoever it is, uh, they, they provide us five hundred and seventy-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars, and it goes into our bank account. What do we have, and we have seven years, you said, to use it? And so what would we be using it for then?
What you would do in that situation is, you would go out and take whatever, if you've got a, a companion amount for parkland location, uh, or if they're dedicating parkland, uh, and, and they're paying the park development fee, then we will go in and develop the parkland, uh, that, that they've dedicated, that five seventy-five, uh, provided in the city, obviously. Uh, so it would, it would go towards developing a park in that subdivision or in close proximity in the assigned quadrant for that area.
So they're just paying us, so we're in front to build a park there?
And the hope would be the fact that most of them would say, I could do it myself, and I will do it myself if I don't have to pay that fee. It's a huge void that's in the current ordinance right now, because right now, it's, you know, if you were to just, just take this, take, take, for example, the difference in this situation, you know, the individual in this particular subdivision could find their way out of that requirement for, what, thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars there abouts. How fair is that to people? You know, what are you gonna do with that money? You're not gonna do much of that money. Land is not cheap. That's why we use these calculations in this, and in park development is not cheap. Splash pad runs right now about forty-five, forty-eight thousand dollars. This is splash pad. And we're talking about the cost of playground equipment. It's just not cheap.
Another question, if you wish.
Uh, so, in this example right here, the first line, regardless of what the builder chooses to do, two acres would be set aside automatically?
They would be required, if it's in the city, the development's in the city, they would be required to set aside two acres. And if they don't wanna do that, they then would go to line two and say, I'll buy myself out of that at a hundred and forty-three, one forty.
So line one is really optional?
Yep.
Not required?
Well, it's required because it's the starting point, right? And that's why we, that's why we refer to it as that. Uh, the optional is, is your option is if you wanna option in to buy yourself out of the dedication, but the, the dedication is your starting point. It's your base. It's required, and then you build off of that. You buy yourself off of that, you can develop it, you can do all types of...
So, once that builder chooses the hundred and forty-three thousand, one forty, everything below is...
No, number three is required.
But I thought he just bought his way out?
He bought his way out of the land dedication. He didn't buy his way out of the development.
Not out of the development.
Development fee's a totally different...
And by doing the optional piece, he gets to count that one forty-three against his development fee, which, in other words, he would put in, oh, four hundred and thirty-one thousand into development park because he took options in, or took that option.
No, if he, if he takes the buyout option, okay, that money goes into a separate fund, and there's no refund of the buyout option. That money goes into a...
Okay, I gotta see what you're saying. I'm just wondering. But by, by him doing the parkland dedication, now this last little private park development credit is what he...
He could. He could, he could fall into either one of those, yes. In response to your question, he could fall into either one of those bottom two options, depending on whether he wants to make it a private park. He, he, if he does number one and doesn't do number two, okay, then he falls down to number three, which he's obligated to pay. And then the credit goes towards the five seventy-five, either a full refund or seventy-five percent refund, depending on whether the park has public property.
Just wanted to show...
Yeah.
Other questions? Coming out of this session, the time is seven forty-seven. Public hearing, first call.
Uh, Linda Reynolds, final seven, San DeBrosa. My home is in the fourth quadrant, or the third quadrant, which is a giant, giant amount of space, uh, and, uh, compared to the other three quadrants. I'm in the third quadrant, and I look at it, if you're looking at that map, and I hate to belabor this, but I noticed that in the Salado land area, uh, they have not included the sanctuary land at all. So it is within the village limits, I thought. So, uh, the map is not exactly accurate. Uh, maybe there was a reason for that or not, but, uh, I just mentioned that, it, I don't know who drew up the quadrants or how it was drawn up, but I, I, and I don't have children who wanna park, play a park, so, uh, it was just an odd arrangement that I wondered, and then I wondered, why, why isn't our accurate, our village's limits accurate in the map? Thank you.
Right. This is the map from the cod that goes out, sanctuary is included in the quadrant.
Oh, it just got on the map?
Yeah. Sanctuary is within the city limits.
Yes.
But we are not able to go back to this point and attach...
I know.
...the park fee on that. Development.
Water over the dam.
One of the three, it's one of the second call. Your office, we teach a special place. Third and final call. Hearing is closed. The time is eight forty-nine. Back into the record session. Don, we need to get approval for the first reading.
First reading, yes, sir. Then it'll come back in two weeks.
I'll entertain a motion, please.
Motion to approve the ordinance submitted by Planning and zoning commission on first reading, second.
Motion been made, consecutive discussion.
Question.
Question has been called. All in favor, raise your hand, please. Passes, ready for the second, second reading. When will that be, the next?
Two weeks, yes.
Two weeks, okay. B. Hold a public hearing and consider approval of case ZA dash twenty dash zero zero one in ordinance of the village of Salado, Texas, designating the zoning for the Salado Independent School District properties located on Thomas Arnold Road and Salado School Road in Salado Bell County, Texas, as public facilities PF and providing for the following severity, effective date, and proper notice and meeting. Don?
Uh, yes, sir. Mayor members of the board, as you know, it's our standard practice to zone land that is brought into the city via annexation. Uh, this is the first of two annexations involving property that the Salado ISD petitioned the village to incorporate, uh, into its limits a while back, which it did. Uh, and so this is the companion zoning piece. Uh, obviously, it goes without saying, public facilities is, is the proper zoning designation for this property is it's a public school, uh, and it will stay a public school for many more years to come. So, our staff recommendation is to zone this property PF public facilities. Planning and zoning commission considered this at a public hearing, and after that public hearing, voted to recommend approval of PF zoning for the Salado School Road property and the Thomas Arnold Road property, property's owned by the school district. Has that identified any...
Questions? Get on, please.
So I'll show you how this is just a protection to the school district?
It's protection to the neighborhood, not as a school district, not because of the surrounding properties. This protects this, this land from being used for anything different above facility.
Other comments or questions? To Don. Coming out of this session, going into the session of hearing, the time is seven fifty-one. First call for anyone who would like to speak. Second call for anyone who would like to speak. Third and final call for anyone who would like to speak. Hearing is closed. The time is two minutes later than what I told you all about. It's gonna be a huge clock back there as well. We're going back into the regular conference of the Board of Aldermen. I'll entertain a motion, please.
Move to approve zone case ZA twenty dash zero zero one.
Yes, sir, second?
Second.
Motion been made, consecutive discussion.
Question.
Question has been called. All in favor, raise your hand, please. Opposed, likewise, passes. Number C. Hold a public hearing and consider approval of case ZA twenty dash zero zero two in ordinance of the village of Salado, Texas, designating the zoning for the Salado Independent School District properties located on Williams Road in Salado Bell County, Texas, as public facilities PF and providing for the following severity, effective date, proper notice, and meeting. Don?
Yes, sir. Mayor members of the board, this is the second companion zoning case relating to the recent Salado ISD school annexations. Uh, this particular ordinance would zone the Williams Road Salado ISD properties as public facilities PF. This would incorporate the high school, well, the junior high school site in that zoning designation. Uh, P and Z held a public hearing on that afterward, voting unanimously to recommend approval of zoning those properties on Williams Road belonging to the Salado School District as public facilities.
Questions, please, to Don. Our comments. We're coming out of this, going into the public hearing, the time is eight fifty-five. First call, one would like to speak. Second call, anyone who would like to speak. Third and final call. The public hearing is closed. Madam Secretary, two minutes. We're now going back into the normal Board of Aldermen session, and I'll entertain a motion, please.
Mr. President, move to approve zoning case ZA twenty dash zero zero two.
Question been made, and consecutive, uh, discussion. Question has been called. All in favor, raise your hand. Opposed, likewise, passes. We're going to number five, please. Ordinance, consider approval of an ordinance of the village of Salado, Texas, amending village of Salado ordinance number twenty twenty dash O one, ordering a general election made second, twenty twenty, for the purpose of electing a mayor and two aldermen of the village of Salado Board of Aldermen, for the purpose of modifying the last day to accept an application by mail for a ballot to be voted by mail, providing for findings of fact, severity, conflicting provisions, governing law, proper notice, and open meeting and an effective date. Don?
Yes, sir. Mayor members of the board, as you know, uh, back around the first of the year, we adopted the ordinance that officially called the upcoming May election. Uh, subsequent to that approval, uh, the state of Texas, uh, came in and modified the dates, uh, in particular, more specifically, they modified the date to the deadline date for the receipt of applications for mail-in ballots. Uh, rather than the original date of April twenty-first, twenty twenty, uh, the new last day to receive mail-in ballots is April twentieth, twenty twenty. So we need to go back in and amend the ordinance to reflect that revised date. Staff recommend approval.
This is not a hearing, this is a normal motion. Any questions, to Don? Not discussion, but questions. I'll entertain a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
Motion has been made to approve this ordinance.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded in discussion. Question has been called. All in favor, raise your hand, please. Opposed, likewise, passes. We're going into discussion and possible action. Number A. Discuss and consider possible action regarding a proposal relating to the minimum lot size requirements for future residential subdivisions within the corporate limits of the village and its ET, ETJ. Planning and zoning commission, is that Katie? Katie gonna...
Katie's here. I'll, I'll, I guess I'll brief initially, and then if Katie'd like to add in, she's here to offer any comment, uh, any frank questions she may have regarding the commission. As you know, uh, you appointed a minimum lot size task force that met, uh, in a condensed period of time, and they came, uh, with some recommendations relating to, uh, the minimum lot size for residential subdivisions, uh, in the future in this community. Uh, and that particular recommendation, set of recommendations came to this board. Uh, you looked at it, talked with the chairman of the board, or the task force, and then you chose to send these recommendations to P and Z. Planning and zoning commission met, uh, and had a briefing from the same individual, uh, Mr. Rix, the chair of the minimum lot size task force. And as a result of that meeting, that discussion, the board, uh, came forward with the unanimous recommendation to approve the recommendations, uh, for that task force. Katie's here, if she'd like to maybe add any comment, uh, or as far as what the board may have thought, or what they talked about. Uh, and, uh, if not, it's before you tonight for consideration. Where do you go from here if you wanna move forward with these recommendations? Is you a direct staff to prepare the necessary ordinance amendments to bring those forward? There would be a series of public hearings that would be held, uh, because you're gonna be amending the subdivision ordinance, and this will also probably trigger some subsequent amendments to the zoning code relating to minimum lot size, so we've got consistency throughout the code. Uh, P and Z would have public hearings, and the Board of Aldermen would have public hearings. Uh, of course, the board having the final say on those, so...
Katie, would you wish to address this?
I think so. Sorry, I didn't prepare anything tonight, but, uh, Katie Hill, twelve twenty-one veins. Um, you know, I think it's really important when you consider this, to understand this is a very limited scope. It's single-family residential only, not multifamily, um, not estate, um, it's only within the city limit, not the ETJ, and it is a starting point for us to continue these improvements. It does not address, um, how wide the lots are along the street. It does not address, um, you know, stray roads or, you know, mandated curves in a new development, all those things that contribute to the way a neighborhood feels. Um, it's... And these are things that we need to discuss and make improvements on in our ordinances. But I think, based on all of the work that the Minimum Lot Size Committee did, I think this is a solid step in the right direction. You can look at their research, and we have lot sizes of all kinds of sizes and scopes in the village of Salado. It is not all one half acre, and so that precedent isn't really there. And these are neighborhoods that have to be on the sewer, too. So that limits the possibility of this being affected even more.
Questions, Katie, please.
You have another question for Katie?
I'll do my best.
Yeah, the first one that says average lot size, what are you going to use to determine the average?
In the new neighborhoods?
Yeah, like density or... Yeah, I just need to be clear, what's gonna be your ratio?
Like, you mean mean versus median?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that could be clearer, honestly. Don, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, you're gonna look at the lot size inventory and make the determinations in square footage. You see it's lot size, it's square footage size. And we're talking about usable lot size, so we're not gonna talk about the drainage lots and those type of things. They're gonna be the dwelling lots, the little lots.
But if you're worried about a neighborhood having 20 tiny lots and one big lot to make an average, that language maybe could be clearer.
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm talking about. What's gonna be the...
When we get into the ordinance drafting, that's when we would try to clarify that language and make sure that's specific.
Okay, thank you.
Katie, if I look at this right, this basically is describing how most of the homes in the Lake Mill Creek area is composed. You have some duplexes, you have some patio homes on smaller lots, and then up to estate-sized lots. So this sort of reflects exactly what we have out here existing, correct?
You know, it kind of does, but those home sizes standards that you mentioned, the patio homes, are a different standard. They have different regulations. They're considered PF, I think, where we're only talking about SF-R. So, I mean, honestly, those are, honestly, they're already ordinances addressing those patio homes, and they have their own standards.
Mike, you raised a point, I don't know if this is the point you're trying to raise, but you raised a real interesting point, and that is, one of the things that this task force discovered is they began their journey into the issue, and that was, quite frankly, when you look at the lots that exist in the village of Salado today within the corporate limits, you would be stunned at the number of lots...
No, I wouldn't.
...that are less than this, that there's... This city is made up of many, many small lots, and it's not a large lot subdivision city. And, you know, you look up at the golf course, and look at the size of some of those particular lots, you look at some of the patio homes, the townhome lots we have in this particular area, even some of the single-family residence lots, you know, everybody thinks we're a half-acre minimum to meet the state standard, you know, per septic. The reality of it is, we have a lot of lots well below a half acre in this town. This may actually be a step up in some cases, if you start looking at the true average across the town.
Well, it's, I sure wish we would have had this kind of regulation in place when we did the Smith Ranch provision, because it's just all high-density lots. This one here will make you have, like, cookie-cutter pieces in sizes, so it really reflects what the Salado heritage is, so I really like this.
Well, whatever y'all decide tonight, I think it's something that we have to continue updating across our ordinances, and if it's the direction you go, it really is the first step, and we need to focus on tightening this up so that we continue to reflect the neighborhoods that we already love, and we're not just cookie cutters.
One of the things that was pointed out at P&amp;Z discussion, if I can add to Katie, was the fact that 5% recommendations for open space that came from the task force, the ordinance you just approved goes a long way towards meeting that recommendation. So you're headed in the right direction, stepwise.
Any other questions, please? Okay, I'll entertain a motion, please. I move, we adopt the pause law and instruct the city after two draft ordinance specified. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made, seconded in discussion. Question has been called. I'll in favor, raise your hand, please. Opposed likewise, passes. Number B, discuss and consider possible action authorizing the village of Salado's continued participation in the Bell County Adaptive Management Coalition of fiscal year 2020. Don?
Yes, sir, Mayor members of the board, it's all about salamanders. This is kind of a housekeeping item. As you know, we budgeted money, and we budget money every year, about $5,000 in the budget to go towards the coalition, which involves the Bell County, Clearwater Underground Water Conservation District, the Salado Water Supply Corporation. We all pitched money into the ongoing study of the salamander. As you know, there's some extensive work that's being done to do DNA tracing and to do movement tracing of the salamander. This is a, it's listed at this point, it's not a federally protected species, but it's something that, as a matter of fact, is coming back up, from what I understand, for a listing. The renewal process is underway. I know that a lot of people sometimes don't understand why we spend money on this and why we even care about this particular individual, and I think it's important to understand that this salamander actually, when it comes down to the management of growth and development, could potentially play a significant role in the future of this community and how it grows. Not just this community, but some of our neighboring communities where there are also some populations that exist. We've given you a copy for your leisure reading, if you have anything you want to do Saturday afternoon, and take a look at the Salado Salmander final report, and we update that report. But our staff recommendation is to authorize execution of the agreement and move forward with this vote for the coming year, which is...
Questions, please, Don, please.
I took a few minutes and read through the salamander report. Fascinating stuff. And they do eat slugs, which are good things, so I like these guys, so we need to prepare them.
I just wanted to, like, make the, like, they are a protected species because they're listed as threatened, but if it's not listed as endangered, and so, you know, they do have federal protections, they aren't listed as endangered. If they become listed as endangered, there's going to be much more protection of the creek and their aquatic habitat, legal restricted construction, and kitty kind of disturbance in the creek.
Well, adding to what you're saying there, that's exactly where I was going, so that's what I'm gonna do. But what I was gonna get at was, the thing to understand is that there's about to be a critical habitat designation, which accompanies the listing, and it is gonna be something that we're gonna need to be very careful and monitor. Fish and wildlife has been sued, because Fish and Wildlife, when it made the list, Fish and Wildlife made a commitment at that time to develop the habitat, or the habitat plan. They didn't, and that's not uncommon, and they're only waiting till they get sued. Well, they've been sued, and now they're under gun to try to get a plan put together. That plan could have an impact on development in the downtown area, you know, maybe not as significant an impact as some fear, certainly not if it got into a full federally protected listing, but it's something that we're gonna need to watch and be careful with. It's gonna look at things like runoff, it's gonna look at things like how we can develop down there, and...
DMVs.
Yeah, exactly right, DMVs, those type of things. It's an important, it really is an important piece from this community. And I will tell you, from an ecotourism standpoint, I think that a lot of people don't understand what that's about, but there are a lot of people, a lot of times, come into this area because of the beauty of that downtown creek and what's in that creek.
Remember, you can tell them that they're very serious about salamanders, but we went to meetings after meetings from across the creek. You don't mess with these people. Just don't, I mean, salamanders are here, and we love them, and we must protect them.
It's amazing the personality clashes that you get into over a salamander. So you know, have the dollars break out, just as a note for the public, Bell County's contributing $20,000 this year, the village $5,000, Salado Water Supply Corporation $5,000, Clearwater $15,000. So quite frankly, we're probably the biggest beneficiary, maybe the groundwater district, just from the standpoint of looking at friends and those type of things, but we're probably the best beneficiary for that, and we're actually paying some of the lease, which is a pretty good deal for the village.
It surely is a good deal, because I don't think we would have been able to possibly have ever paid into this organization. Not that that was the reason they did this provision, but at least we showed that we believed in what they're doing and how they're doing it.
We need to be blessed that it hasn't been listed as an endangered species yet, and we hope it stays that way.
Well, it's been, the important thing to also know is that we're putting forth a good faith effort, and that's what, you know, they consider as a good faith effort to be protecting of those areas where the salamander resides, and so, you know, I think a lot of the things we've done down there that were limited because it's not listed as endangered, it's only listed as threatened, but there's some limitations that we can and can't do in the creek, and things that we've done in that area have greatly improved that, and it's recognized kind of throughout these reports. And so, even some of the, and people don't realize, but I know there's a lot of people listening online, too, is, you know, we have a lot of regulations about what we can and can't do with the park, and whenever we have festivals, like, "We're gonna pass this down to park." Katie helps us run around and tell people, "Oh, my gosh, don't put tins stakes in the ground," things like that, because, you know, it's a car-stick area, so every time you hammer in a tin stake, it leaves a hole that goes directly down into our groundwater supply, which is where we get our drinking water from. You know, we're proactively thinking about those things, but people don't, aren't able to really connect those dots, usually, I mean, unless you're a nerd like me in the business. You just, people don't really think those dots, so everything that we're doing down there is purposeful, to help perclude the listing as a danger.
Very well said. Well, I'll entertain a motion, please.
Move that we continue participation in the Bell County Adaptive Management Coalition for FY.
And authorize the mayor to execute the rule.
Yes, authorize the mayor to execute.
Second.
Motion been made, seconded in discussion, please. Question has been called. I'll in favor, raise your hand. Opposed likewise, passes. Number C, discuss and consider possible action authorizing the village administrator to contract with a vendor to provide landscape services on certain properties owned by the village.
Yes, sir, Mayor members of the board, as you know, we budgeted money this year for mowing services. Specifically, these are the areas we're talking about when we run through this year. We're talking about pace park, and what we're talking about is professional mowing. We have a small mower, you know, that has the ability to deal with this. We're talking about bringing in a mowing contractor that will mow pace park on a regular basis. We're talking about all the way, all the way to the bank and all the way back. We're talking about going in and dealing with Williams Road, Salado Plaza, the Mass intersection, the entrance intersection of the town. They would deal with the landscaping underneath the highway. In addition to the companion pieces leading up to that intersection, they would handle the regular mowing of those. They also would be responsible for taking care of the beds and mowing in front of our gateway signs on a regular basis, and dealing with the weed issues, weed counter on a regular basis over there at those two locations. We sought proposals. The best proposal we got back was from a group called Salado Lawn Care, at a cost of $5,425, which we think is a pretty good bargain based on the frequency of mowing that we expect on this situation. They are licensed, they're bonded, and our staff recommendations should allow us to authorize with them and let them get to work.
Is there a number, is there a certain number of caddings that we get that are in?
Absolutely. They will be, they'll be mowing the park itself every three weeks during the growing season, and every 45 days during the non-growing season, the staff will continue to maintain the park and the mowing up around the pavilion itself and the playground area, and that's a daily, that's a daily tour weed encounter. They're also dealing with fire ants in the common areas in that particular area, and they'll be maintaining the Williams Drive overpass, that intersection. They'll be mowing around there, near assigned areas of overpass, also treating for weeds and the rock and mowed areas, and that'll be done on an ongoing basis, more than likely at least once a month, depending on the time of year, and then maintenance of the flower beds will be done once a month, two at least.
When you take this picture, there's hardly a car on the center of the state. This place is usually jammed.
They're going so fast.
I'm not telling you, during an instructional time, I don't know if they're going to... It's our home on the interstate, look at the jam.
Let's look at this. You put that in a section, there's not...
It's having some courtesy. Day or something. Well...
Those are really salamanders, those aren't cars.
If there is no, if there is no more, if there's more questions to Don, I'll entertain a motion.
It's a total of 54 for a year.
Annual fee.
Yes.
Okay, is that also gonna be like trash pickup, too? Is trash robbing is gonna be...
They're gonna, they'll pick up, they'll pick up in those particular areas they're assigned to work in, yes. And rest assured, the first mowing to pace park is gonna be a messy mowing, because that area down there has not been mowed in years, as far as going that close to that.
Scattered trash for the lawn, we're gonna pick it all up.
Yes, yes. We have tried to stay away from those areas that the volunteers dedicated themselves to, because we appreciate what they do, and we don't want any friends on that there. That's a great service they provide. This is a little bit too much of the volunteer. Well, it's a safety issue our concern, too.
I'll entertain a motion, please.
I move, we direct the village administrator to contract with his mowing proposed mowing vendor at a cost of $5,400 per year.
$5,425, exactly.
$5,425.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made, and seconded in discussion, please. Question has been called. I'll in favor, raise your hand. Opposed likewise, passes. Don, that is one of the best things, and that is from the Salado Spark, that's really good. The lawn volunteers together, we're gonna have a beautiful, beautiful hearing. Okay, number D, discuss and consider possible action approving families for the Texas Wine and Road Art Festival scheduled for March 28th through the 29th, 2020. Don?
Mayor, I'm the curator, June, and she has been patiently waiting in the back, and I'd like to see if she'd like to come up and brief him on what all's going on. She does a great job at this festival every year.
Oh, I'll tell you, some of the things that you did, June, really got us through a very difficult moment.
I'm June Mitter Bush, and this is my 12th year having the Texas Wine and Road Art Festival. I typically have about 20 wineries come and another 40 to 50 vendors. We've already got the food trucks arranged, security is arranged, and rentals are arranged, so I just need your blessing.
Questions, please, June.
Didn't we always go with the last weekend in March, unless it was Easter?
I have a question for you. This is K. Martin, he's right down here. On these kind of things like this, what, what kind of facilities we have, like, are used to?
We have, we've arranged porta potties. Because everybody can't come in my building, I need one to...
That's a lot of you know, so...
We've always arranged porta potties, and we get a hand wash station.
Other questions, please? Thank you very much, June. You always put together the first class, very first classes. Okay, I'll entertain a motion, please.
Mayor, I move to approve and bless the Texas Wine and Road Art Festival.
Is there a second to approving and blessing this motion?
I think they've become religious in that.
No, is there a second? Motion been made, and seconded. Any comments or special?
She asked for a second, so I gave her one.
Can you write your policy? Question, thank you. I'll in favor, raise your hand. Opposed likewise.
Thank you, June.
Thank you very much. That's all the businesses that we've got, Don. Is there actually anything else you want to add to that? Comments, good? I hear motion being voted to adjourn. Who's adjourned? Is there a second?
Second.
Time to go on to the floor.